Welcome to recessed regular meeting of the Pascagoula City Council. Today's August 19th, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. Thank you to those who are in attendance to council chambers here at City Hall, as well as those joining us online. We're happy to have you with us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Nathan Chilton, and Councilman Fournette will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, please stand.
As you said, my name is Nathan Chilton. I'm a student pastor at Collective Church. I'm here and with standing in place of Pastor Eric Camp, senior pastor at Collective Church. And it's always an honor and a privilege really and humbling to be invited to come do this. And so, we thank you guys.
Thank you.
And let's bow our heads. Father, we just love you and we praise you. And Jesus, we just give you all the glory. And we come before you tonight with just Thanksgiving in a heart first. And just thank you for everything you've done. And we pray right now for wisdom and direction over this meeting. I pray for favor over every single, the councilwoman and councilman and the mayor and the city manager and everybody here in this room, Lord. You take, you take a hold of this meeting and direct us and give us the wisdom, give us the sermon, and let there be a spirit of joy and peace. It only comes from you. And no matter what we do, help us just be a reflection of who you are. And at the end of the day, we can sit back and give you all the glory, Jesus, because everything we have and everything we have in this great city comes from you. And we continue to give you the credit and the glory for what's been happening here. And then, thank you for what you're going to do through these people you've appointed and through the people here tonight. And again, just you get the glory. We love you, and Jesus, pray, and pray. Amen.
Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mayor, I have three amendments to offer. The first is a facility use agreement with the school district. You use the former art center as a backup location for the Hurricane Katrina memorial. And that's proposing to put that on consent. The second one is to add purchase or sale of land related to the 12th Street Wall Fields to executive session. And then, the third one is to move the Woolza agreement, which is 7I, under cutback in the agenda items to 9B.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other amendments? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have three proclamations. Our first proclamation is proclaiming September 2025 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Morrow? If you'll come up. Whereas more than 15,000 children under the age of 19 will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States in 2025, including more than 120 in Mississippi. And whereas approximately 1 in 263 children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer before their 20th birthday. And whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. And whereas nearly 500,000 survivors of childhood cancer are alive in the United States. And whereas by age 50, more than 99% of childhood cancer survivors have had a chronic health problem, and 96% have experienced severe or life-threatening conditions caused by the toxicity of the treatment that they initially, that initially saved their life. Now therefore, I, J. Willis, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, Mississippi, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Again, thank you for being...
Thank you. Can you get a picture? Yeah. Sure. One, two, three. Thank you. So, this is really awesome. I'm a childhood cancer survivor myself. I was 12 in 1996. So, you can do the math and figure out how old I am. Last year, we had all the co-cities do these proclamations for September, except for Pascagoula and Moss Point. This year, we've got everybody but Moss Point, so I'm working on this. But it's really important to these families. You guys know, I'm sure, that Jackson County is riddled with childhood cancer, especially DIPG, which is an inoperable, incurable brain tumor. So, this is really important to those families to see people put gold ribbons on, to light up their buildings gold. You'll notice the Hancock Whitney Building in Gulfport goes gold, as does Joe Park, and the Wolfsey Lighthouse goes gold for us in September as well. So, that's the reason why it makes these families feel like they're represented. So, this is really important, and I really appreciate y'all doing this. I love some gold worth in there, y'all, to wear. Wear them all month proud. And if anybody asks why, you know why now. These kids and these families are really important, and this means lots to them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Star World Series Championship for 2025. Come on in, guys. Turn around this way. Let's face the... Whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Star World Series Championship for 2025 was held in Dunn, North Carolina. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Stars had an unforgettable season to remember, this young team showed resilience, heart, and incredible growth throughout their All-Star campaign. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Stars kicked off their World Series Tournament by winning the Mississippi State Championship. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Stars represented the city of Pascagoula with the help of dedicated parents, friends, and family, placing fifth overall in the nation. And whereas the coaches for the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U All-Stars are Coach Daniel Marks, Jonathan Dodgerl, Harris Leathersby, and manager Kenan Woods. And whereas the players on the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball All-Star team are Louis Bates, William Batley, Carson Curry, Jacks Dodgerl, Thea Harper, Trendland Harris, Kaylin Jenkins, Titan Kimbrough, Wade Marks, Jamari Pugh, Justin Stennis, and Kenan Woods II. Now therefore, I, J. Willis, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, Mississippi, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby honor the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 6U coaches and players for a job well done this season. Congratulations.
Can we get your picture, you guys? 13. Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Good job.
The final proclamation is recognizing the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Star. Whereas the Pascagoula 12U All-Star team competed in the Diamond Youth Baseball All-Star World Series Championship for 2025, held in Lexington, South Carolina. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Stars had an unforgettable and outstanding season to remember. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Stars earned their place in the World Series Tournament by finishing as runner-up in the Mississippi State Championship. And whereas the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Stars proudly represented the city of Pascagoula with sportsmanship, dedication, and the support of their coaches, parents, friends, and family. And whereas the coaches of the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Stars are Coach Kalen Wills, Coach Jeffrey Charlo, and manager Adam Burnett. And whereas the players on the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Star team are Grayson Burnett, A.J. Paray, Silas Mason, Braden McCoy, John Taylor McNeil, Nelson Pugh, Jeray Sanchez, Brandon Shune, Luke Charlo, Everett Tally, Deion Olmer Jr., and Anderson Wills. Now therefore, I, J. Willis, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, Mississippi, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby honor the Pascagoula Diamond Youth Baseball 12U All-Star coaches and players for a job well done this season. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Coach.
Can we get a picture? Say, one, two, three. Thank you. Can we get a picture? Say, one, two, three. Thank you.
Congrats.
Good job, guys.
Wrong age. Next, we have the public comment section. We're pleased to provide an opportunity for each, at each meeting, for comments by citizens limited to three minutes each, per speaker, and no more than a total of 30 minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is not a question-and-answer session. The mayor, council, and administration officials will take all comments under advisement and may respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. This evening, we have a number of folks wanting to speak. We'll start with Ms. Judith Skiba.
I want to apologize. It's taken me a long time to come and welcome you all to your new term now. But I have moved out of Pascagoula, and this is the last city council meeting I'll be coming to. I really want to thank what you did in the first term about a lot of things. And the people of Pascagoula really want to thank everybody for the wonderful jobs you did. I myself want to thank you for doing, remodeling the libraries and that. And I think it's very important that we focus on the young people and give them an education that they really need. And if we don't have our libraries, you know, there's really no place for them to go and that. Anyway, I know the first term was kind of a trial and error type situation, and you kind of made a mistake, or you, you know, you learned a lot of things. I brought some tools here today to make your second term to be as smooth as can be. And I brought some notebooks as one of the things I brought. But I brought you something else. This, this tool is very special, and this is going to help you get through this second term. It is, this box here holds all the secrets to Pascagoula. And believe me, there's some Lulu's in here. But if you ever have a question dealing with the shipyard and Chevron, and you need an answer, just open the lid and it'll give you your answer. And Mr. Mayor, can I present this to you for the whole council? Everybody on the council, this, it's what it's for.
We may call a recess in play around. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure.
And good luck to your second term.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Take care.
Next, Matthew Jones. Mr. Jones, if you'll come up and introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Now, I apologize in advance. I can't really follow that until we can give it what it needs. My name is Matthew Jones. I'm a resident of Pascagoula. We've lived here about five years, but I appreciate your time this afternoon and let me speak with you. And I'm going to keep it brief, and so, doing that, I need to stick to my script. But last night, I discovered after reading, oh, did I say 1,000 Shepherd Avenue? Sorry.
Thank you.
There you go. Last night, I discovered, after reading through the agenda, that tonight's meeting will cover the possible lease at the Lakeview Avenue's Inner Harbor. And with that, I wanted to quickly share some thoughts for myself and some of those that I've picked up from talking to the neighbors in the area who will also be affected. I also wanted to capture a few of the concerns regarding the potential lease of part of the Inner Harbor for personal gain. Since finding out about the proposal myself, I have since spoken to many of the neighbors who would be impacted, and honestly, transparently, have yet to find anyone in favor or enthused about the effort, about the project. While everyone understands the desire to have their own personal pier, lift, dock, the construction will have several negative impacts on the area. First, the construction of a lift and dock will take, for many, our serene view, which is one of the main drivers we chose to live where we live. It is very peaceful. A structure of the harbor will surely disrupt this view and diminish the natural beauty that we all cherish. You see, we do not have a large expansive view of the harbor, but what we do have, we treasure deeply. Secondly, the construction of a structure will devalue the surrounding properties, as the locations will be less desirable due to the aforementioned visual deterioration. The presence of a large structure in the water will make these properties less attractive to potential buyers, leading to a decrease in property values. This is a significant concern for those of us in the area. Additionally, I would like to point out that really only one person has been asked, oh, I'm sorry, one of the affected neighbors were approached about their opinions of the proposed construction. Many of the residents who will be directly affected by the structure have not really been approached to share their views, which is one of the reasons I'm here tonight to talk to you about this. Such a significant change to our community needs open communication with all of us who stand to be negatively impacted by this project, and I trust that you will do so. In conclusion, I urge you all to carefully consider these concerns, for which I have only covered a few. With this lease, multiple Pascagoula residents will be sacrificed so that there may be a few that benefit. Preserving the natural beauty and property values of our neighborhood is of the utmost importance. Thank you for your attention to the matter, and y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we have Mr. David Gregory. Mr. Gregory, if you'll introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
I'm David Gregory, and I live at 12113 Greens Ferry Road.
And is that in the proposed annexation area?
No, I live south of the power plant, but I own 30 or 40 acres in the proposed annexation area.
So, you're not a resident there. You're just a landowner.
I got 34 black Angus cows I'm representing tonight. I'm probably the only person that's got cows in the annexation park.
Thank you.
Anyways, I've lived in Pascagoula from 2001 to 2009. I've had two houses in Pascagoula since then. Love living in Pascagoula, walking down the beach, all that, all fine. I left because of building codes back in '09. Don't plan on coming back. I really don't want to buy nothing down here in case it's a great deal. So, I looked at this fast facts at a glance. I wasn't really interested in this stuff, but I was called and went to a meeting. And it's, y'all want to annex 25.2 square miles of proposed land, and we're going to get 784 new residents and 372 homes, and we're going to get a 40% projected revenue growth. That's $18 million coming from Jackson County, and I got nine pieces of property in Jackson County. So, every one of them's going to go up, because I think Jackson County's got $160 million budget. I ain't for sure, but I think y'all's is 20-something. Ain't for sure, but I know it's falling. Your population, I'll get down here to these facts, why annexation. Pascagoula is one of the most densely populated cities in Mississippi. I'm not a smart man, but I know how to use iPhone and Google. Pascagoula is the 19th most densely populated city in the state. Some of them's Jackson, Gulfport, and South Haven. Pascagoula is currently declining at a rate of 0.6 annually. The population has decreased 2.94% since the most recent census, which was recorded a population of 21,969 in 2020. 20 years ago, it was 30,000 people in Pascagoula, and Pascagoula supported the 30,000 people. Now, and so, the real thing's about the money. Y'all spending the money, y'all taking in, there ain't no war to get no more. People's moving out of here left and right, the county's growing, and y'all not. And I don't know what to say about that or what to do about that, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to give up my tax dollars out there, then that's going to put the county in a bind, so then that's going to go up. I know the real thing is the interstate, because everything wanting to be annexed is wetlands. I've lived out there for 62 years, off and on. It's all wetlands on Boll Combs. If you want to smoke a joint or drink a beer, that's the best place to go. It's called Blunt Road. You get up here under an orange grove by Shingle Mill, that's another good place to drink a beer, but I don't drink beer. You get up there, the only valuable thing up there is interstate. And y'all said in y'all's things, y'all need some interstate land. That'd be great if you build a Buc-Ee's, some hotels, and all, you'll get plenty of tax dollars. I got one paper in here that says y'all going to get $80,000, $79,000 in sales tax from that area a year. So, it's all about the money. It says in here that this is going to help me, it's going to bring my insurance down. That was it? I'll be back next week, next time. Thank y'all.
Ms. Lisa Clark Cannon. And tell us your address as well.
My address is 13017 Forts Lake Road. I live just north of the annexation area.
So, you're not affected by the annexation?
Oh, yeah. Law enforcement affects me, that's effect, and the taxes affect me.
But you don't live in the annexation area?
So, the city struggles, this is not a Q and A, sir, respectfully said. The city struggles to maintain and improve current infrastructure. During the city council meeting on July 15th, a key agenda item addressed repairs of a failing drainage line at the intersection of Parsley Avenue and Manto Street. Cost estimate, $929,883, replacing approximately 700 linear feet of 42-inch drain line. And of course, it did include infrastructure work. Council members raised concerns about funding for future emergencies. The city explained that it is gradually shifting tax revenue from the general fund to capital project funds. A city official noted, and I quote, "We can't get crazy, but there is money there. City reserves were depleted but have been slowly replenished. We do have cash reserves, but we are not considered a healthy city yet, though we are getting there," end quote. The proposed annexation plan raises significant financial concerns, particularly given the city's admitted financial fiscal constraints. Installation of water lines and water service, installation of sewage disposal lines and treatment facilities, the provision of street lighting were necessarily and economically feasible. Given the city's acknowledgement that its reserves are only, quote, "slowly being replenished" and is not yet a, quote, "healthy city," questions arise about its capacity to fund these extensive infrastructure projects. For context, the $929,883 cost for 700 linear feet of drain line repairs suggests significant expenses for similar infrastructure over a larger period, larger area. Extending this to the proposed annex area, which is approximately 42 road miles, that's 221,780 linear feet, could escalate costs dramatically. If my calculations are correct, $1,328.40 per linear foot times 221,780 linear feet that you need to run equals $294,585,984. This estimate excludes the additional infrastructure like water, sewage, electrical systems, as well as repairs to the roadways that would be impacted by construction, as it is based on a drain line repair estimate only, not including your current responsibility to your existing citizens to maintain and repair your existing infrastructure. Thank you, and I have submitted in writing additional information.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Mr. Greg Fleming. And again, give us your address, Mr. Fleming.
My name is Greg Fleming. 10501 Picane Road, right slap dab in the middle of it.
Thank you.
So, I don't have no fancy speeches or nothing. I've talked to, know most of you. Been inside my mouth a lot, Dr. Willis, Mayor Willis. But I grew up in Pascal, graduated with some of y'all, worked with a lot of y'all. And I moved 27 years ago today. I did that for a reason, not because I hate Pascal. I think y'all doing a great job down here in Pascal, but I didn't want to live in the city anymore. I wanted to get out in the country with my three boys at the time. Now, I got a daughter, now I got 10 grandkids that I like to be able to enjoy my property with. And I talked to some of y'all on the phone, and I would like to know what is the benefit for us out in the annex area? The benefits were we're going to get better police protection. Now, I had lunch, actually, with Terry today. Can't beat that man. But we got a sheriff station a half a mile where I know every one of the officers there. They stop by the house, they come to birthday parties. We're pretty well protected out there. Fire department, Franklin Creek, right there, a mile and a half from us. We've had many fires out there. My house has never burned down. They have protected us very well. So, the benefit to us, as I can see it, is to have Pascagoula interstate presence. Man, that really is good for me, because if I go to Moss Point and look at their interstate protection, I see people standing by the road asking for handouts. So, what I'm saying is, my dad taught me something a long time ago. Greg, if you're going to go to somebody else's sandbox, go as a guest and don't try to take over. Pascagoula is your same. Pasca Gula is your sandbox, and I think you're doing a good job. And I'm not gonna try to tell y'all how to do it. Y'all are doing a great job. But I moved in the country, Jackson County, and that's my sandbox. And I'd like to keep my sandbox the way that sandbox is right now, where my kids can play in the road if they want to. So I go right down here, and I see under the bridge, Fourteenth Street Bridge, and I see homeless people with mattresses and all that. I feed the hunger, the homeless. I set up shelters all the time. I don't want them in my backyard with my kids playing. So my time is out. I pray that y'all do the right thing and hear the people out in the annex area.
Thank you. And Ms. Christie Fleming. Give us your address and whether you're in the annex.
One zero six zero zero Pecan Road, right next to my father-in-law. My name is Christie Fleming, and I am married to Greg Fleming's son. The one that loved where he grew up. I don't have something prepared for you all, but I do have my heart, and so here it is. I am a homeschool mom of four boys, okay? I have one more than Greg Fleming raised there. I love where I live. I did not grow up here. I don't always like everything about it, but I don't think you like everything about where you live either. But what I do love is it's quiet. I love nature. I love that I get to walk in my backyard and there's deer. I love that every day I get to sit on my front porch and I see tons and tons of different wildlife because of our beautiful wetlands that are in my backyard. Because guess what? I share, I am the one that shares the alligator farm. That's my property. And then if you jump across the street, I own the other twenty-some acres over there. And I don't speak of somebody who hasn't been to Pasca Gula, because I own two houses here, too. Pasca Gula is great. That's fine. I love Pasca Gula. I came from Minneapolis, Minnesota, where I love cities. That's fine. I don't want to live in one. I do not want what it brings, and I do not believe that there is not one thing offered to us as residents that is beneficial to us. This annexation is simply for money. You know it, and there is one thing that I teach my sons. I homeschool every day, and I teach integrity. I teach do the right thing, even when no one's looking. And this is the wrong thing, and you know it. You guys are trying to take land from people who moved out there because we love what we have. You have a literal wildlife nature center next door to where I live, but you're trying to tell me that you want to take the other half of that property, and you guys want to go ahead and rip down the forest? Really? Like, it's wetlands. I can promise you it's wetlands. It's guaranteed. You can go research. It's wetlands, you guys. I'm trying to build on it. I promise, because I just called Moss Point and Pasca Gula to make sure that I was able to build. But oh, wait, what was I having to do? Jump through hoops to make sure that I wasn't building on their wetlands? I am a hundred thousand percent against this, not because I don't want Pasca Gula to succeed. Opposite. I own two houses here. I love Pasca Gula. Keep Pasca Gula where Pasca Gula belongs, so that we can have the difference between a city and county and country. And I just ask that you would show the integrity inside, and when you lay your heads down at night, I'm just gonna be really honest with you, that you would maybe just think about the residents. If you lived there, would you be okay with it? I don't think so. That's all I have, and I really appreciate your time. I normally don't speak with you guys, but truly, I really hope you listen to us who live there.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about this consent agenda?
Mayor, we're gonna be a huge...
Certainly. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the city manager's agenda items. Mr. Larson.
Yes, sir. So our first item is item eight A, and it's an update on the Krebs Avenue parking lot. This is a Main Street project, but Susanna's out of town, so I'm covering it for Susanna tonight. Main Street Pasca Gula's flagship revitalization plan, Phase One, is set to kick off on Tuesday, September the second. This phase focuses on improvements to the city-owned parking lot on Krebs Avenue. Main Street's been working closely on this with our city engineer, James Douglas, and the work will be done by contractor H H C G LLC. The approximate cost of this is a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That's being paid for with ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds. They have worked hard to get that approved, and they finally got final approval on there, and so ready to move forward. What this includes, and you can see, you've got pictures here, but what this is going to include is the resealing and the restriping of the parking lot there on Krebs Avenue. They're gonna be adding on-street parking and handicap parking, which will add a total of twenty-two spots to this parking lot there. There's gonna be some concrete curb and gutter insulation work. So there's going to be an addition of a stamped concrete crosswalk from the train track right-of-way there that's already existing. That's gonna connect all the way to Krebs Avenue to the front of where the Oddfellows Building is there. And so that'll be, and it will be protected by bollards, too, to keep pedestrians safe. It'll be clearly marked. That entrance there to where you can enter from there, that will be gone. So they only have one entrance, one in and out on each end of that parking lot there. And then the, they're also doing a traffic island where Pasca Gula Street turns onto Krebs Avenue. There's already a, you probably never noticed it, there's a triangle already there. They're gonna raise that and make that into a traffic island there to, we're entering Krebs Avenue. So that's basically what the project includes. They're going to do this project in sections to allow through traffic on Krebs. Business owners will all be notified, and the parking lots resurfacing that will close the parking lot will be done on Saturday, and we'll be able to be reopened on Monday, so it won't cause any issues for parking during the week, so...
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Can we make sure that we publicize this?
Oh, yeah.
You know, we want to share the good news with...
Yes.
Our residents, and I know, you know, Main Street will, but we can share that.
Absolutely.
From the city standpoint, too.
And especially emphasizing the fact that it is actually increasing the number of spaces, because I know that, you know, there's a concern about parking, you know, downtown. There really are plenty of spaces. Sometimes we just have to park a little bit extra.
And you can't see the spaces now. You've kind of just parked where you want to there, because it's been so long. So that resurfacing, the repaving is gonna help a lot. I mean, restriping.
Is that contractor somebody we've used before? I don't recognize him.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think it's the same one that did the...
Okay, all right. We need you.
And I think they did the parking resealing and all of the wrecked building. They just did theirs. I think they're redoing, they did theirs as well.
All right.
So that's all on that. I have item eight B as well, which is a update from the Pasca Gula Redevelopment Authority. I kind of just wanted to give an update here on the PRA-funded projects that are in progress right now or soon to be in progress. So the Train Depot, hopefully everyone saw that this weekend with the arrival of Amtrak. Work on the depot is moving ahead, along ahead of schedule. They're expecting to have that completed in the next two to three months, probably closer to two. So it's coming along a lot faster there than they expected. We're excited to get that project completed, especially with the arrival of Amtrak. So moving along there. The Ice House, as of today, they're saying still about thirty days out from groundbreaking. They've run into a little issue with moving a fiber optic line that they're working with the county with, but seems to be the biggest holdup on being able to break ground on that. The first phase of that will be a four parcel structure there that will have, I think they have two to three tenants that they're in lease negotiations with now, that they'll be ready for that. So hopefully, we'll see some movement at that property soon.
So will the initial development of that be closer to the highway?
Yeah.
Or is it gonna start kind of in the...
No, it's closer to the highway.
Closer to the neighbors and...
Yeah, it's closer to the highway, that part. And you can see a picture of it. They've got a picture of it posted of what it's gonna look like, and they've done a lot to make it kind of mimic what the Ice House looked like with the arches, and so that's the whole theme of it, will try to mimic what the Ice House looked like.
And let me add that we heard found out last week, thanks to the efforts of our councilman Fournette, that one, the first phase is gonna include a firehouse subs, which is gonna be a nice addition to the city as well. Thank you, Felix.
Where's the restaurant? You're welcome. Thank you.
I think all four. I think three of the four that they're in talks with now are all restaurants, and so that's, that's good for us.
So I do have one question. When is the second phase supposed to start? Any idea?
I don't have a date on that one yet, but it's another strip like this one else, too. So that's Phase Two.
Along with the hotel in the back. The hotel is in the works, still.
That's right.
One last question. Is it supposed to do something with the unclaimed or whatever that building was, where the furniture store was? Is it supposed to do anything with that?
He owns that, yeah. He's got some, a renter in it right now, just until the property, until they get started on that. I don't know exactly what his plan is for that, but he does own that building.
He's looking for a tenant.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it a T and T once?
Actually...
No, it was a furnitures. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's in the same building.
Yeah, on the end.
Yep, yep, yep.
Right, yes.
Yes. We also have Mr. Bill Wingfield. He and his wife are the owners of the Dermatology Clinic. Dermatology Clinic owns four branches right now, locations right now along the coast. They actually are operating out of a, they have their fifth here in Pasca Gula now on Shortcut and McPhelia there, that building there.
They bought Dr. Garrett's practice.
And they have bought, they've purchased property at fourteen, fourteen oh two Jackson Avenue, and they'll be tearing the property that's on that down to build their fifth location here on Jackson Avenue, so...
Where is it close to? Is it close to Market Street or...
Yeah, and it's right next to, there was a car dealership there. I think it's in between Car Dealership and the Regions Bank. It's right there. So it's a, it's a property that's been sitting empty for a while, so it's great to have, you know, something new coming there.
Is that closer to the fire station outside Jackson?
No, it's next to Regions Bank.
No, it's not far from Market, yeah.
Just east of Regions.
Yes. That's what he said, like an...
So they're gonna tear that property down and to build the new one. Their financing is complete, and they expect that project to be completed by the end of 2026. And then just the last update is for the Pasca Gula Run. The Pasca Gula, it's a, it's an app. This is gonna be an app that has been developed to highlight nine Jimmy Buffett-related stops locations here in Pasca Gula. The app will play Buffett's music, it will be interactive, it will hopefully have video clips. So as you pull up to the site, the app will, by location, know where you are and start playing videos and songs there about the location. We've been in talks, PRA's been in talks with the Buffett family and Margaritaville to secure memorabilia to be presented at some of the stops as well. So those are ongoing talks here. We're getting closer, and so we were hoping to have that by Cruisin'. It's not gonna happen. Just takes, things take a little longer than expected sometimes. There's no timeline for completion, but that is in the works. That'll be pretty exciting. And each stop will have a marker that we've seen, the design's very pretty marker, that will be at the, probably displayed at the stop, so excited about that.
Any questions about any of the PRA project? Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next, we have the city attorney's agenda item. Mr. Moore.
Four items. The first three are for final approval of tax exemptions. The first one is for Ingles Shipbuilding. For all three, these counts were previously approved preliminary approval. They were sent to DOR. DOR provided its approval, and so we denied, for consideration, the final approval of these tax exemptions.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution granting final approval of an ad valorem tax exemption to Ingles Incorporated?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, quick question, Mike.
No, go ahead.
Do you still retain those forty mills?
That's right. The exemption is only above forty mills.
That'll be for both of these?
For all three of these guests.
We, I actually, for everybody's benefit, I asked Justin what that equates to money-wise, so that, you know, there was a clear understanding of kind of what that looked like. Justin, you mind sharing again?
Yeah, I called Charlene, who looked at the numbers that they were presenting, and I think it was about sixty-five thousand dollars is what she said, and so...
Total.
Yeah.
But that's for one year. This is a ten-year period, so really it's...
Yes, just for this, for this one, for this...
All the new equipment that was put in place for this year. So at any given time, you have ten years of this equipment that you're giving that exemption for. So I know there was a lot more in question.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
The next one is for Bollinger, Mississippi Repair. And this is the same proposal.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution granting final approval of an ad valorem tax exemption to Bollinger, Mississippi Repair LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? So do you have a dollar value on that from Charlene?
It was the total, sixty-five.
Oh, sixty-five, including all?
For all three.
Yeah.
All three, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
And then the last exemption is for Bollinger, Mississippi Shipbuilding.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution granting final approval of an ad valorem tax exemption to Bollinger, Mississippi Shipbuilding LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes.
I have one more item. This is an agreement with Bullseye Public Affairs for Public Affairs Relation Services. Council previously approved their engagement. This is the formalized act of the agreement.
With the formal contract. Do we have a motion to approve the formal contract with Bullseye Marketing?
Flomo?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I didn't necessarily see a clause for us to get, if we wanted to terminate the agreement, but it does say for up to six months. So we could decide to terminate that agreement if we so choose, before the end of the six months? Is that correct?
That's right.
And we haven't, to date, received any invoicing from them, right? Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we have the docket of claims. Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
So moved.
Please.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion regarding the docket of claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the payroll docket. Are there any questions regarding the payroll docket? Do we have a motion to approve the payroll docket?
No.
Did I hear a second?
I see.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion regarding the payroll docket? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have mayor council items. And I've got a few mayor council items to start things off, and then we'll go across the table. The celebration Saturday for the Amtrak stop in Pasco Gula was huge. Everyone that we saw on the train ride, all of the guests who came from the rail commissions and the other people from other cities and just tourists and people on the train could not get over the support that the city of Pasco Gula showed Amtrak when they showed up Saturday at the event. I thought it was a great day for Pasco Gula. It was a great look for Pasco Gula, and all the comments were extremely positive. It's a wonderful service for the Gulf Coast. Mardi Gras Line is what it's called, and it is huge that the rail commission selected Pasco Gula as one of the stops in Mississippi. And our neighbors to the west are really not happy about that. So I want to be sure that everyone understands the importance of supporting the rail service.
Absolutely.
Even if it's just to get on the train and ride to New Orleans and then come back. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity, and hopefully we'll meet a lot of the travel needs of the people on the Gulf Coast. Upcoming events, too, related to Hurricane Katrina. Thursday night, the 28th, the county is having a celebration, as it would be, with music and speakers and lots going on commemorating the 20-year anniversary of Katrina, but it will be Thursday, the 29th, 28th, at the Sound Amphitheater in Goche. It's free. If any of you hadn't been out to the amphitheater, this is your chance to come out and have a good time celebrating. And then the next day, Friday, which is the actual 20th anniversary of Katrina landing, the city of Pasco Gula is going to have an event at Point Park. Our Congressman Mike Ezel is going to be our speaker. Haley Barber, former Governor Haley Barber will be there speaking, and we're looking for a big time there, 2 o'clock at Point Park on the 29th. Councilman Stallworth, you have any items you would like to bring up tonight?
My items are still the same thing. I'm trying to get this yard cleaned up down on the end of Market Street, and I haven't heard anything back yet.
They've been contacted. I mean, we've got a time period we're in the middle of, but I think they have been contacted.
They have a set...
With a paper. Is that paper?
As far as I know, yes.
They have a set period of time to respond, and they're in the middle of it, apparently.
Yep.
Is that correct? Very good. Councilwoman Fournette.
Yes, I was to try to somewhat piggyback off of what you were speaking about earlier about the Amtrak situation. I always get coffee down at the district coffee company, and those young ladies there were very excited about the way things had gone. It's just going to be nice, man. I really, I'm excited about it. It's very colorful. I was not able to make it, but just seeing the pictures that were posted. And let me ask you something, Justin. Where were you guys at when y'all took that picture? Were you guys somewhere else?
That's in Mobile. That's where the train left you all, was at the convention center.
Beautiful, man. We're going to have to pump that up, seriously, man. We've got to get that thing going.
Yeah.
Let everybody know, man. I didn't know the neighbors west of us had a problem with it. They should be glad for us.
We would be glad for them if we were in their position.
Yeah.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Young.
I appreciate, Justin, the staff and the engineer updates, and even from codes and stuff like that that we're getting. I think that it's very helpful for us to understand it, but is there a way that we could get maybe those project update and like the information, not publicize somehow, but maybe even just as something that we accept, and that way it can be recorded in the minutes, and that way if the public wants to read about those...
The project lists us today?
Yeah. I just think that there's a lot of exciting things happening in Pasco Gula and a lot of progress that's happening, and I think that if we could, or maybe we just, once a week, pick one of those projects and publicize about it, or just give a project update or something like that, because there's a lot of really great things happening in Pasco Gula, and I think that we should promote those a little bit more. And maybe Mr. James could come like once a quarter and give us a project update at council meetings or some sort of way to get more of that information out to the public. And I did see also, speaking of events, that we're adding a Thursday night event to Cruisin' the Coast.
Yeah.
For, Main Street is, based around the Jimmy Buffett theme.
Buffett Bumpers is the name of it.
So that's really exciting. I think that's going to be a fun time.
Yeah. The businesses all asked after, every year, we need something to bring. The park is great. It's the best place on the coast.
It's the best venue.
But they'd love to have some help, you know, bring in business.
Yeah.
Just to stay in town, so that's what we're going to try.
It's going to be fun.
It will be, yeah. It's going to be, it'll be down here, yeah.
Yeah. It's going to be fun.
Awesome.
And it's a, I'm sorry, it is a Cruisin' sponsored event, too. So they have been pushing it. They've been talking about it a lot. You've heard about it. We're expecting a big, big, big crowd at that event, too.
The cruisers tend to be very big Jimmy Buffett fans, and this is going to be a Jimmy Buffett celebration on Thursday night.
We have a Jimmy Buffett themed band coming that's a kind of a...
A tribute band.
A tribute band. It's a big-name band, and so it's going to be fun.
Yeah.
Bay St. Louis tried to do something like this last year, but I let them know this is Jimmy Buffett town. We're not giving that up, so...
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Parker.
I don't have a thing to say.
Councilwoman Brandon Stein.
I just do want to reiterate about Amtrak. I really appreciate the chamber and coast tourism, obviously Main Street, the city.